Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Council meeting for June 15th, 2023. I'll call the meeting to order. Absent tonight, Councilmember Keith Partick. Councilmember Peggy Hartman is joining us virtually. She's out there somewhere. And Mayor Mahoney is absent tonight. And as Council Vice President, I will chair tonight's meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I give you the Republic for which it stands, for my nation, and for all who live here.
Thank you. Just for the record, I'd like to wish my daughter a happy birthday today. I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Agenda's approved. Is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? On the agenda? Yes, ma'am. Please come up, give us your... Could you come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name's Linda Draper, and I live at 8193 Windward Key Drive. And I would like to speak in support of the Urban Forest Ordinance before the council. I'm a member of the Green Team. This ordinance would bring together a committee of citizens, town employees, and tree experts to provide oversight and guidance on protecting and maintaining the tree canopy on town public property within Chesapeake Beach. The benefits that trees bring to the urban environment are endless: higher property values, cooler temperatures, erosion control, economic development, and healthier residents. Neighborhoods with trees have higher property values than those without. Trees add beauty, texture, and color to yards and public areas, increasing their value. It has been shown that towns and neighborhoods with trees are 7 to 9 degrees cooler and are protected from cold winds over neighborhoods without trees, thereby reducing energy costs. Lower energy costs to the town would ease pressure on the town budget. Green spaces have proven to improve the mental and physical health of town residents. Providing parks, walking paths, and other landscape public spaces allow residents to get outdoors, socialize, play, and exercise in an inviting environment. Trees absorb carbon dioxide, mitigating effects on climate change. Trees absorb up to 40% of urban traffic noise. As the town grows and more vehicles pass through, reducing urban noise will make the town more inviting to new residents and businesses. Finally, well-designed planting of trees near water areas can have a tremendous impact on stormwater management, preventing flooding and erosion. Strong tree root systems filter water runoff, absorbing chemicals, fertilizers, and other pollutants before they flow into the water system. As a bayside community concerned with pollution of the bay, rising water levels, and beach erosion, management of a strong and healthy tree inventory is essential to resolving these issues. Providing an attractive and healthy environment in the community will encourage new visitors to town, which in turn will increase traffic to local businesses, improving the economic health of the beach. This ordinance provides Chesapeake Beach with a framework to grow and maintain our tree cover, add beauty to our town, as well as demonstrate our commitment to an improved residential, commercial, and natural environment. I thank you in advance for your support of this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any other public comments on the agenda? Hearing none? We have one public comment tonight, Mr. Frank White. Mr. White, please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name's Frank White. I live at 8180 Macle Road, St. Leonard. Couple things real quick. I built two homes on Elm Street. And one of the things on the agenda tonight was Gary Goldsmith, as I'm not really sure, has an issue with the driveway that we put in. So we'll have to deal with that. Biggest things, ever since I started the project, there was two homes I built there. Basically, ever since I've started, he's, I don't know, been a thorn, has issues with everything we've done there. I've dealt with the town administration and Jay with Public Works, everything we've done. We've tried to meet all the regulations that you guys set forth. I think, I thought we've done that, basically. The first home we built for a client, he ended up having the house shut down for a month, which drove this lady completely insane. And so she decided, she really wanted to move to this town, she loves the town, a friend of hers lives here. She decided, after all this stuff, that he's, all the problems that he's caused, she decided she didn't want to live here. So she decided to end up selling it. So she did. The second home I built for my daughter, and now my daughter, with all the problems that we have, she knows the same problems. And she just had a grandson, they should have been in this house by now. She decided she didn't want to live here. So now the house is up for sale. So everything we've done, I believe we've followed the rules and regulations. If not, we've dealt with the town, we've talked with the town. Any things we have to change or do to meet requirements, we have, at least I thought we have. And then both houses have been finished, and we've got UNOs for both houses. The county's approved everything we've done. When these projects started, it was Gary's intention that we'd put in and install a turnaround, which no one's ever used since. So that was a complete waste of money. So, you know, whatever, and my problem is, I just need to make the comments, and then I actually have to go out of town. So, and then, of course, when we finished, long story short, we had a landscape a few weeks ago to finish, to get our UNO, and we were there on a Sunday to try to finish up. Mr. Goldsmith, on a Sunday, came down, completely screaming and getting everybody's face, losing his mind, claiming the driveway was his, which it's not, and just disrupting everything. I'm also in the middle, I'm not exactly in the middle, paperwork has been signed, the property next to Mr. Goldsmith and above Mr. Goldsmith is for sale. Papers have been signed, and I'm buying it, along with the driveway in the right of way. And he just constantly, constantly is interrupting everything I try to do. And it's beyond harassment now. So I'm just a little tired of it and irritated with it now. I've investigated and found out that he's tried this with several other builders. He comes at everyone yelling and screaming, and they run away, which I don't have a problem with, he doesn't bother me one bit. So we decided, we were putting up a sign stating that I was going to build a home next to his property, which is on the driveway. And of course, you guys can look it up, see what the property is. Come to find out, the sign that Mr. Goldsmith has at the end of the driveway, which he claims is his, which is not his, is actually on the town's property. And according to the ordinance, if you look at it, you're not allowed to put signs up of your own on town property. So one of my complaints, which I guess didn't get into the books tonight, is to have him remove that sign. So one of my biggest things is, you know, hopefully we can resolve this driveway issue. Also, I'd like to know who's watching Gary. There's a lot of stuff going on back there that nobody knows, he's got signs on your So if he wants to play by the rules, then he needs to play by the rules, and he needs to follow them as well. That's pretty much all I have to say. He's pretty much just gunning for me because I'm buying the two lots that surround his property. So whether he's upset or not, I told him, if he didn't like it, then he should buy the lots. He doesn't want to buy them, so I'm buying them. That's just the way it is. I don't know what else to do. I mean, again, my daughter wanted to move here because she loves the town, so would the other customer, and it's kind of hard to build a home for a family to come to a town that they want to live in, and then you have to deal with this. And that just runs them away. And everyone on that street has the same issue with him as well. The first home I built, Gary approached this gentleman complaining that his driveway wasn't wide enough, and he was going to deal with it, and he said it's none of his business. He just, you know, he just needs to mind his own business, but apparently he doesn't do that. So either way, I just wanted to express my opinion, and that's pretty much the way it is.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Moving on, ask for approval of the minutes of the May 18th, 2023 public hearings.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Approval of the minutes of the May 18th, 2023 Town Council meeting, motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Approval of the minutes, the May 18th, 2023 closed session, motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Finally, approval of the minutes of the June 6th, 2023 informational work session, motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, petitions and communications. Tonight, we're privileged to be visited by a couple different groups. First is Calvert Health. I'll ask Mr. Jeremy Bradford. Mr. Bradford is president and CEO of Calvert Health. Come up and give us a little introduction.
Thank you, councilmembers. It's my honor and privilege to be before you all tonight as the new president and CEO of Calvert Health. And not just to introduce myself, but also to comment, if you will, on all the great work that our team's doing at Calvert Health. And we're blessed to have a phenomenal board of directors that leads our organization, as well as over 1,100 members of our team. So just a little bit about me, Jeremy Bradford, and I bring with me to the community my wife, Jenny, and our two children, Maggie and Turner, who go to school here in Calvert County. And we're just honored to be here and to be part of this community and look forward to making the community better than the way we found it, and not just at work, but to be involved in our community and to help make a difference. So thank you all, as we've had interactions with several of you and many people within this community, of the opportunity to make us feel at home. So thank you. And I'm just wrapped up right at my 100th day in the area, so we've kind of hit the ground running and having fun. So, you know, for me, healthcare is a calling. It's a passion, it's something that I've always done in my entire career. I knew at the very young age of around 12 or 13 that I wanted to work in healthcare. And I feel like that my career path has led me to the opportunity to compliment the team members that we have at Calvert Health. And when you look at being one of the largest employers in the county, I take that very seriously. And our most valuable asset is our employees, as well as the patients who entrust their care into each of our team members. So as I share with you tonight and kind of walk through the presentation, the first slide, and many of you may already know this information, but I think it's important to note just the staple that our organization is in this community, you know, being around since around 1919. Like I said, only one of around five to six independent hospitals, healthcare systems in the state of Maryland. And as we all know across the country, health systems are merging, even the large ones are merging. And we, as the independent health system, have been able to remain independent and are working hard to keep that independence, to ensure that we serve our community to the best. And then I just wanted to share with you, as we look at the different services that we offer, and I'm not going to go through each and every one of them, but it's a very comprehensive list, if you will, as far as the services. And our goal is to keep people local. And if that's to developing partnerships and collaborations with other health systems to bring the specialty services that otherwise we couldn't bring on our own, we're working to do that. And then one thing that really kind of has hit home with us is really the partnership on our cancer care, and I'm going to get into that a little bit later in my presentation. But there are a number of different initiatives that we're putting forth that I think you all, as councilmembers in this community, should be proud of, and I know you are. But one thing that we try to do is ensure that we have access to healthcare in our community. So we have different locations in Dunkirk, here in Twin Beaches, Prince Frederick, and Solomon's. As we embark on the next slide, I wanted to just touch on some points of distinction, if you will, because as you choose healthcare, I think it's important to note that our pursuit of excellence is something that we strive for every single day. And that's to ensure that no matter who walks through our doors of our health system, that they receive nothing but the highest quality of care. And with that is our pursuit, and a couple grading systems, we have the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid, CMS, who ranks all health systems across the country. And with that, I come to you tonight to, proud to share with you that we're four out of five stars. We're on the pursuit of being five out of five. There's some work ahead of us, but you should be proud of knowing that you have in your backyard and in your community a health system that is four out of five, because that's a large feat to even achieve that. And then two, from a leapfrog rating system, we're coming in at a B, and it ranges from an A to an F. So it just kind of gives you a perspective, as we know, A being the best and F being the worst. And then two, a number of certifications that we've received. And one thing that I'm immensely proud of, one, as far as our redesignation as a primary stroke center, but one thing that I wanted to point out is the recognition that we received from the Daily Record Healthcare Heroes Award. And this was prior to my arrival, but I would be remiss if I didn't share with you tonight this recognition. And we're one of the only health systems in the area to receive this recognition, and more information is going to be coming out. But it's a true demonstration to our team and what they did throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and what they've continued to do. But we are being recognized for all the great work, and we're going to celebrate that with our team. But I wanted to point that out to you tonight, one, if you don't hear about it, but two, I think just to share with you that, you know, through the toughest times, through the toughest times, our team always rises to the occasion. And that's one of the main reasons, to be honest with you, why I chose, and my wife and I chose, to bring our family here. One is the commitment to excellence from a board's perspective in our team, as well as always rising to the occasion to ensure that our community, we're collaborating, we're partnering, and we're exceeding expectations. So I wanted to just recognize our team publicly tonight with you. Some of the top initiatives that we're working on, that I wanted to touch on, cancer care with our partnership with Duke Health. You know, we're expanding on a number of different services. We're about in phase one of phase three, as far as the different initiatives that we're putting forth with Duke Health. And Duke Health is only one in 54 in the country NCI-designated health systems with their network. And one thing that I wanted to point out there is, and the reason why we chose Duke Health is because Duke Health allows us to keep patients local, so bring their expertise to complement our oncologists and our medical surgeons and oncology surgeons to ensure that care can be rendered right here in our community. But if a patient needs to get to a higher level of care, by all means, they have the ability to go to one of the campuses at Duke. But our goal is to keep everybody, again, local. And then behavioral health with our partnership with Shepherd Pratt, with our inpatient adolescent and adult unit, where we're able to address the epidemic that we have on our hands right now with regard to behavioral health. We have a unit right in our hospital that allows us the opportunity to provide those services on the inpatient and outpatient basis. And then bariatric services with our recent addition of Dr. Lamy, who joined our team. We're getting ready to celebrate our 100th bariatric surgery right here. And when we look at obesity in our community, we're coming at it from every angle, not just surgery, but also from a weight management standpoint, and to ensure that our community has those services so that people can get back to a healthy lifestyle, and we can help them on that journey. And then lastly, I'll share with you with our robotic program. We were able to communicate last night and bring in a number of people, as far as education, and those who are closely aligned with us, with their generosity and a commitment to a significant investment in our surgical department, and that's with a robot, robotic program. And we're looking to have our first surgery performed in 2024. So I wanted you all to be one of the first to hear about it and to know all the great work that's going on behind the scenes with the continued investment and advancement of healthcare at Calvert Health. And then two, we're in the midst of a strategic planning. I'll have to share with you, council, that day seven on the job, we had a board retreat where we kicked off our strategic plan. And I asked the board members as I was coming on, I said, well, who's going to be leading the effort of the strategic plan? And this is before I even started, I said, well, Jeremy, that's what we're hiring you for, that's your job. So day seven, I was already prepared, working with our team and our executive team, where we engaged with a third party, and I'm going to brag a minute on our leadership team. We did about six months' worth of work in about a month, month and a half, where we vetted agencies across the country to help partner with us, with our board, with our strategic plan, because we want to make sure that we're prepared for all the changes, because healthcare is changing at a rapid pace, and we want to make sure that we're ahead of the curve, so that we're preparing out and looking ahead three to five years to ensure that we're well-positioned to be successful, to not only meet the needs of the community, but also our employees. So we're hopefully going to be presenting to our board of directors in September a strategic plan that's going to be approved. So we're in the midst of that as we speak, and hope to have it wrapped up in the very near future, and I look forward to updating the council in the future as to that strategic plan. And, you know, at the end of the day, the stakeholders really make up. We want to make sure that we hear the voice of our customer, and that's our internal stakeholders, as well as our external stakeholders. So we're going through that process as we speak to ensure that we have well-represented feedback from all communities in which we're serving. And then also, if that's not enough, we're in the midst of our community health needs assessment. When we look at the needs of our community, to ensure that we're meeting those, and they really kind of align, to be quite honest with you, with obesity, with behavioral health, to ensure that we, as an organization, are aligning with the needs of the community. So with that, we're on a triannual survey, and we're in the midst of that. We hope to close up the survey on June 18th, and then we'll be compiling in partnership with the Calvert County Health Department. So we join forces collectively together to work on this community health needs assessment, because we feel like when you collaborate and you partner, you get a better outcome. And we've achieved that already in our partnership with the Health Department. So we're hoping to be bringing forth our top community health needs in the near future once we have that assessment completed, but we are looking to wrap that up on the 18th of the month. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you all. Thank you for supporting me, and thank you for supporting our health system, as we're wanting and we're committed to exceeding expectations of this council, as well as of this community. So thank you for welcoming me and allowing me to be part of this community. I look forward for a bright future together.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. It's welcome to the community after your 100 days, and I'll just tell you, as I'm sure you've heard, it's such a comfort to have such a high-quality medical facility so close by. So thank you. I'll just ask if any councilmembers have any questions, start with Councilmember Wadine.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions, but I did want to welcome you and your family to Calvert County. You'll wind up loving this place. It's a terrific place to raise a family and to just live life. And so, welcome.
Thank you.
Let's remember, thank... I don't have any questions either, but I will share one very brief anecdote without going into details. Two years ago, my wife and I had an experience in the Calvert emergency room, and the treatment that we received was outstanding. And compared to some of the nightmare stories you hear in other emergency rooms, that is not always the case. And I'll just cap that off by saying that my wife's time was going through some cancer care. And one of the things that ended up happening was the docs there, who were helping us in the emergency room, were also quickly able to determine what they should do and when they should be in touch with our cancer care docs, and I kind of respected that, that they were able to do that. So thank you, welcome to the community, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Morse.
Thanks, Larry. Jeremy?
Jeremy, yes, sir.
Yeah, Jeremy, again, welcome to Calvert County, particularly my favorite area of Calvert County, which is right here in the Twin Beach area. You being, I guess, counting your 100th day here, that's remarkable. We all had our 100th day, you know, being in Calvert County. A couple of things, you may be aware, over through the years, I know that the town of Chesapeake Beach has been very generous in the past with supporting fundraising and general support of the Calvert Health. We're definitely keenly interested in how we can partner in, in a way to improve the healthcare access here in the Twin Beach community. I know you had mentioned and you had emphasized a facility here in the Twin Beach community. It's very important to us, and we're definitely interested in continuing our partnering, but keenly in a way that helps to lift, you know, access here in the community a little higher. So we're looking forward to continuing partnering in our discussions and how we can improve things.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
Councilmember Hartman?
Aye, yep. Just wanted to say, welcome to the area.
Thank you. Once again, thank you for joining us tonight. We look forward to seeing you again soon.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, next communications, Calvert Library, retired Mayor Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, for this opportunity, councilmembers. I don't believe I've met everyone, but, and Ms. Hartman, I'm sorry I didn't meet you tonight, but thank you for this opportunity, and to the people who actually run the town, the others up here, Sharon and Holly. I'm here in the capacity of being a co-chairman for a fundraising committee, serving at the pleasure of the foundation board of Calvert Library. Grace Mary Brady and I both serve in that capacity. And with me tonight, before I go any further, is the branch manager of your Twin Beach branch, Melissa Gray. Melissa? Not quite yet. She has a handout, you have some, and we have some here, but there is enough money to construct a facility. What we're in a campaign to do, and we're trying to raise about $500,000, is to equip and fund this facility so that it will be a true 21st century library to serve northern Calvert County. I'm going to come back up when Melissa is finished with just some closing remarks about the struggle that we had, the location of the library. And by the way, thank you for opening your doors to me tonight, I wasn't sure how I was going to be received, but it was very warmly, thank you.
Good to have you here, Mark.
Okay, so let me introduce Melissa Gray, you probably know her. And she will tell you, and as you'll see in this handout, why it is that we need to raise this money specifically. A lot of times, fundraising is a very broad goal, but this is for specific items, and she's going to share that with you, and then I'll have some closing remarks.
Hi, I'm Melissa Gray. I'm the branch manager at Calvert Library, Twin Beaches. First, I'd like to thank the town of Chesapeake Beach for being our home library for the last 33 years and for providing the annual town grant to assist with 25% of our rent during this time. We love having you as a community partner, and hopefully we've shown that appreciation by actively participating in town events over the years, whether it's the Extravaganza, National Night Out, the Twin Beaches Health and Wellness Fair, or even Halloween Family Fun Night. We show up in other ways as well, by attending town council meetings, Memorial Day at Veterans Park, the naming of the Fallen Heroes Bridge, and hosting reading groups at Beach Elementary School. Calvert Library really is embedded in the town of Chesapeake Beach. Just like the move from North Beach to Chesapeake Beach in 1990 was needed for growth, the latest move is also needed for growth. The Twin Beaches area grew from under 3,600 people in 1990 to just over 9,000 people in 2020. Calvert Library, Twin Beaches branch, will expand from a little, from almost 5,000 square feet to almost 18,000 square feet to meet the present and future needs of the Twin Beaches communities. If you can look at details in page three of the packet. It'll offer gathering spaces and technology that are not available at our current location. We will be able to serve everyone with increased programming and access to technology, entertainment, and resources in the new location. This new location is still your local library. It's exactly 1.4 miles from the current location, and it will continue to serve the whole Twin Beaches community in a more robust capacity. Recently, we surveyed the community to gain greater insight into what they're hoping to see and utilize in the new library. With 475 responses, we really appreciate the town of Chesapeake Beach's support for sending out the survey in your email blast to help us collect this valuable data. Here's a summary of what the community are looking forward to. Access to a laminator, who knew? A 3D printer, laser cutter and etcher, STEM tools such as microscopes, a cricket machine, sewing machine, art supplies, and vinyl printer. Adult learning and enrichment activities such as arts and crafts, book discussions, home and garden classes, health and wellness, local history, food literacy and food preparation, musical... musical performances, finance classes, science and technology, and computer classes. Children's services such as STEM learning classes, storytime, crafts, and classes for homeschoolers. Teen services such as STEM learning and gaming events. Before I turn it back over to Mark, I'd like to take a moment to highlight a comment on page 10 in the, from the community survey. "I've been walking past the construction site for months. One evening, all the floors had security lights placed around, almost like decorations. And it made me think about the nature of public libraries. They are buildings full of light, full of knowledge and wisdom that help illuminate the often dark and confusing world and all it contains for all of the people who visit them. I've been coming to the library events for almost 20 years now, and they've been a wonderful, fun, and enriching part of my life. Keep up the good work. Once again, we cannot bring all of this to fruition without your help, one of our greatest community partners." Mark.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Melissa. In an earlier century, I had the pleasure of serving on the Board of County Commissioners, Calvert County. And in one of those terms, that board made a decision to move the library from North Beach to Chesapeake Beach. Historically, let me just make you aware that the very first library in Calvert County was in North Beach on Third Street. It was only there from '38 to '44. And then Calvert County didn't have a library until the 80s. And the library was opened and what was, had been serving as the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department on the second floor, and you had to go up an elevator that held maybe one or two people. So it was certainly not ideal. So when the time came and the opportunity came that it no longer was adequate to serve the public, the recommendation was brought from the library to the county commissioners. And they approved the move to its current location. This was in the end of the 80s, early 90s. And it has served very well at that location. But it was right, it was the right decision at that time to do that. I'll never forget getting an earful from Randy Hummel and Warren Callis, some names that Mary Donovan would probably recognize. About any others. Anyway, the point being that there were some people whose feelings were hurt about it being moved, but it was the right decision. And through all the struggle that we had a few years ago about locating the new facility, there was a lot of politicking. But in the end, that is not what was the deciding factor. In my opinion, the trustees made the right decision because it was the best location. So I hope you'll look at it that way and join with others who will be, who's, who will be identified on donor plaques as you enter and exit the library probably for the next 40 or 50 years. So I appeal to you, I thank you for your time. And I'm available if you have any questions.
We'll go around and ask some questions, but I had a quick one for you. The last I heard, the tentative ribbon cutting is like February. Are we still on track for that?
That's the latest date that I've heard, yes.
No?
No.
So it's, they haven't announced, they told us the challenge is that in fall, they'll have a better idea of when the building will be complete, we'll get use in occupancy, and then move our current space to our new space. I was at a meeting today and they still said they're delaying that date till fall to give us that confirmation.
Blame it to fall of next year?
To tell us when in the spring.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I got it.
I'll go around and see if there are any other questions. I'll start with Councilmember Hartman.
Hi, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
Couldn't hear you, Peggy.
Oh, no question.
Okay. Councilmember Morse.
Yeah, welcome, Mayor.
Thank you.
It's interesting, I could be 10 years out of office and I'll still be referred to as Councilman. But it's always, it's definitely good to see you. I do have some, some comments and curiosities. Library is an exciting project for everybody. I know my first visit to the Chesapeake Beach Library, I was there utilizing the internet there. I was looking for a job and it just happened to be September 11th, 2001, the morning. It was an interesting moment in time for me there. And my most recent visit there, I met a resident there and we had virtual coffee there to discuss some important issues. So, and the library was there as a pleasant backdrop to that. So library's been part of the fabric of my life for several decades. The North Beach location is a win for the Twin Beach area, for sure. It's always been my opinion as far as that goes. And I wanted to compliment you, this is really a great service to champion. The town of Chesapeake Beach wants to continue its fruitful partnership with our library system. That's for sure. So we're looking forward to that. And we're looking forward to having some discussions and how we can, you know, many different ways we can support our local library. Had a curious question, there was, Ms. Gray had mentioned musical performances at the library. I was just wondering what type of things you had envisioned with that.
I'll have to defer, I'm not with the library. As a matter of fact, when this campaign's over, I'm out. Melissa?
Is it okay if I speak from here?
Could you come up, I might just, we can, we're YouTubing it.
So in the past, the musical performances that we've had at Calvert Library, Prince Frederick, are the military bands. And so this new space, we will have a 100-person meeting room. So that is a potential opportunity to bring the military bands to the Twin Beaches communities. That's what we're envisioning.
That sounds awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a couple of quick comments. First of all, I will share with you, one of the first things I did when I ended up with a house here in Chesapeake Beach was make a trip to the library and get my library card. And that was quite an experience. I go to the library on a very regular basis, I've probably seen you. So I'm very excited about this, I was part of the library design committee. And I just think it's very exciting. I think that you neglected to mention one of the most important things that you guys have participated in over the years, which although not in Chesapeake Beach proper, was the Pat Carpenter Holiday Parade. I know that our group was quite festive, but we had no match for your Mexican dance that was done. And I wish to God I had that on video.
The library carts.
We have it.
The library carts.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. First of all, Mark, it's really good to see you. And don't make this your last sort of adventure for service because you're very good at it. And we all benefit from your experience. So you need to stay around. Melissa, who actually taught my daughter Ashley, needless to say, enjoyed storytime, enjoy the ability. If you don't know this, you can search for a book at Calvert County Library and it's the most amazing thing. And you can place it on hold. And if they don't have it themselves in their library, they will go into something called, I think it's called Marina, and they will find a book for you. The farthest book that I ever got that I wanted came from West Virginia. And so the services that the library provides are immeasurable. And we've, I recognize that. And the effect we had on Ashley, thank you. I do have two just quick sort of ideas that came to mind as you were speaking. And one is, of course, I'd request the town administration to place this request for funds out on the email blast and on our website and things like that. Every dollar helps to get to the $500,000 goal that you've set. And so I would request that the town administration do that. Second, if you want to, this is an idea that might build excitement for the library, if you will, even though everybody's already excited. But you mentioned moving from the old library to the new library. Have you ever thought of making it a Twin Beach community event where you get volunteers to help? We always get volunteers looking to get community service learning hours, which are required for graduation from Calvert County Public Schools. Have you ever thought about like, or could you think about some sort of volunteer activity that would help you move the books from point A to point B to, as a, almost like a PR sort of thing also, where you're building, everybody's excited about it already, but that would even make it, make it feel more of a community. And it's just a thought that you could think about. I don't know how to do that, but one book at a time. It's just the idea of a volunteer event like that to bring community together, garner excitement which already exists, but even more so, bring the Twin Beaches together in some sort of event like that. It could be cool. Other than that, I just wish you luck. And I look forward to any ensuing discussions that may occur regarding how we may be able to help or not.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Gray, once again, thank you for joining us.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark, always good to see you. Yes, sir.
Just as your mayor is not able to be with us this evening because of, he couldn't. The same applies to the director of the Calvert Library, Carrie Wilson. Melissa is here in her stead. She would be here except she's in a very similar situation as the mayor. And my last comment would be, I don't, I'm not familiar with your budget, but I would like to suggest a round number of about $100,000 we're asking from the town for a contribution. And that can be spread out over three years in the form of a pledge, if the budget permits. I mean, you all are familiar with the budget, I'm not. But, okay.
Mark, just so you know, the mayor and I already discussed this and this will be on our agenda for our July work session, everyone, funding issue.
Thank you.
Take it up then. Thank you.
All right.
Moving on, Town Administrator's Report.
I just have a couple of things to add. So we have, do have some exciting news for upcoming Town of Chesapeake Beach fireworks display that'll be held on July 3rd. This year, we have music is going to be synchronized to the display and it will be broadcast in partnership with Calvert County through Calvert Broadcast. So you'll be able to livestream into that and actually listen to the music while you're watching the display as well. It will be positioned on two barges. You'll have a great view from it from several locations in town. It'll be a backdrop to the Chesapeake Beach Veterans Memorial Park. So public viewing spaces at the memorial park as well as Kellums Field and several other areas. We also have an update related to state highway improvements. And we'll be getting some e-blast out on this. But after the 4th of July, they will be shutting down Route 261 near Bayfront Park. So that will be both northbound and southbound lanes. And so there will be a detour going through Summer City Boulevard to Old Bayside. So just wanted to get that out there.
Okay, hopefully we've all had a chance to review Holly's report. I'll start going around asking for questions. I'll start with Councilmember Valerie.
Just so we can have an idea about the closure and the detour, how long approximately will it last, a week, a month, a year?
They expected it to be about two weeks.
Yeah, the sooner we get that information out, that'll affect a lot of things. When is this expected to happen?
After 4th of July. We do not have a date yet. However, we'll, we are working closely with state highway and we will get that out to the public.
So by all means, it should be completed, obviously, before school starts again and affects bus routes and such, is that correct?
That's correct.
I do have some questions for you. Number one, sustainability. The dogwoods planned for the Kellums parking lot area. Just know that, and if you want more information, just let the green team know, they prefer some other species that might do better than dogwoods in that environment in that parking lot. And we're more than happy to follow up with you with specific selections that would be better in that environment in a parking lot. So it, you know, we can provide you that list. Is it too late?
No.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to hear. Next, same section, number D, Japanese knotweed removal. We just wanted to thank you and the contractors. And we look forward to the green team looking to see how, you know, how the results are of this project. Japanese knotweed can be a problem if it's not eradicated completely. So we just look forward to seeing how it goes and we appreciate the efforts. Next, federal dredge work status. On the, I'm gonna, we might not have an answer to this, but this is needless to say, most disappointing. The fact that the amount of material that was dredged out of Fishing Creek made us, or made the Corps of Engineers run out of money for this contract and will not be doing the South Jettie. And I guess my, my overall question is, how could we, or they have underestimated the amount of dredge material to that extent where it affected their ability to actually complete that project?
We did not provide that estimation, the Army Corps of Engineers did that. So that was part of their bidding process that we were not a party to.
Did we, but we had an opportunity to inform them what we thought, like whether it be trends or whatever, what the cubic feet, yards were that were going to be removed? And was it that far over expectation?
We had multiple coordination conversations with the Army Corps of Engineers and we have never heard the number that was in the bid docs. Do you want to address that, Wayne?
Thanks, Wayne.
True value. Numerous conversations with the Corps of Engineers in reference to their bid docs and questions to them about their volumes. They never shared them, they never would. We are responsible for taking that material out and disposing of it, which is why we were very interested in that. Could never get the information. Now we've learned they underestimated the amount of material. 100% their work, their work effort. Now we're going to move the material out at some point when we're able to, but they've run out of money because of it. So it really wasn't a town issue. We kept asking the same question you're asking now all along and couldn't get an answer.
Well, it only is a town issue because it affects our captains. It affects the boats that go in and out of there. So it's an issue from that perspective. Because the hope was that the South Jettie would stop the amount of material moving into and over the jetty. Although most of the material, my understanding is, comes down Fishing Creek estuary. But still, this is unfortunate. And so I guess the follow-up question would be for either of you. A little bit of work was done on the South Jettie. What's going to happen there? Are they going to leave it as is or are they going to alter it in some manner?
So the Army Corps of Engineers have stated that they've required the contractor to remove what they have completed. So we have asked that they not do that. And we have asked for a debrief with the Army Corps of Engineers to include our state partners as well. And so I'm waiting to facilitate that coordination with them, but we have requested that meeting.
Best case scenario, I know we have no clue, but when would it start back up again? And is it, if it's going to be in a year or so, does it make logical sense to have that little portion removed? It just seems like reworking kind of crazy to me.
Does not make sense and that's why we're trying to facilitate this coordination meeting with them.
And so this is a perfect opportunity to raise that crazy idea I've had before. And I don't know how to make it happen or even how to pursue it. And that is that idea that the dredging of Fishing Creek occurs on a consistent basis. If we could ever come up with the equivalent of a mini dredge that would allow us to do it on our cycle or even rent it out for like the Chesapeake Beach Bond Resort, if they wanted to rent out the mini dredge to do buy their boat slips, they could rent it out or do whatever. But some sort of method that would allow us to have more control over this dredging situation that is cost effective for us because the Corps of Engineers does pay a large, obviously, the majority of this, if not all of it. But it just seems like we should be able to pursue an innovative way to deal with this.
And I would just add that the state of Maryland has been a great partner to the town. They funded two partial dredges within the last five years. And so they have, they have really been doing that for, for the town citizens at 100% their cost.
Yeah, just, I just want to, you know, raise it if I may, I'm sorry. I mean, did you see the length of her report? It's huge. There's a lot in here. And so I'm trying to be like judicious with what I ask. I did want to like touch on another issue. Unfortunately, last month I was out of town in Alaska for work and I missed a town council meeting. So I did want to mention Kellums Field and my perspective or have a request regarding Kellums Field. Kellums Field and the beach box. And that is, having been in Alaska for my job and missing the last meeting, I wanted to be assured that any issues regarding the beach box has been resolved. And if not, encourage the box leadership and the administration to set up an in-person meeting to resolve any remaining issues that may exist. Because I am selfish and I enjoy sitting there on Friday nights outside at my house, listening to the cheering. And I don't want anything to influence that. So I encourage the beach box leadership and the administration to get together, resolve any remaining issues. If there are none, fantastic. And so, and I only say that because I wasn't here last month. I didn't have an opportunity to speak on it. And so I just wanted to put that out there. And I'll wait for further comments because I didn't mean to monopolize the time, but big report and good report, really good information in here. Thank you.
Councilmember Fink?
I have a couple of short questions, Councilwoman, but I uncovered most of the dredging. So I, you know, it's the good answers. I, I don't know anything about the engineering out there. It certainly seems odd to me that they would remove what's there, but it did occur to me if it's, if it's 50% done and not stable and it gets washed away, that's not good either. So I, I mean, I don't know if that would be the case. So I'd kind of yield to what you say or what they say as far as that's concerned.
I haven't really looked at it, Larry. But I, I mean, Charlie, excuse me. I certainly agree that removing what they put in doesn't make any sense unless it's going to be a hazard.
Yeah. I was out there on my paddleboard, Wayne, but I, I couldn't really determine much. So I'll leave it to, I'll leave it to you. Most of the other comments I have are only comments, not questions. Pocket Park RFP was released. Yay. Outstanding. Very excited about that. You made mention of the Miller Lovess Park. I know we're going to have a pretty thorough report from the Kellums Committee, but just real quick, anything that we do there, we're still, still is pending the drain.
Correct.
So I just want to make that point for folks that are following along at home. And then on the drain, you, you mentioned we are coordinating with the county. What I had wrote in my notes here is that my understanding is the county moved the target for us a little bit regarding the MOU. Can you just in two sentences tell us where we are on that? I know, I know I know this, but not everyone does.
Sure. Thank you. So we are required to submit a packet that Wayne's office is working on for a variance request. And I've been working closely with the Director of Public Works and he is fully prepared to receive and review that promptly and get that back to us. So we don't expect any issues with, with getting that approval through the variance.
Right. So hopefully the, the goalposts are now wide and won't be moved again. That's bottom line. Thank, thank you for that. Last thing I have are just noting two projects here. These have been on the list forever that are part of the infrastructure, pocket parks, et cetera, that reminding folks that the funding for those was serendipitous. We took advantage of it thanks to quick work by Holly and work by the Walkability Committee to, you know, seize on projects that were ready. And, and with that RFP out, we should be breaking ground on those shortly. And I really look forward to that. So thanks to the committee for that work and to Holly for being on top of that. I agree with Councilman , but I, it's a big report. So could be here all night. We'll go through this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple. Great on the Pocket Parks RFP. I'm looking for that going ahead. And as I usually ask, I saw on the Safe Walkway 261 near the fire department, Jaworski Memorial Walkway. Walkable Communities Provider, an update, can you just share a little bit what was shared with them?
Sure. So we've been meeting with the Walkable Community Group. They've been very active. They've held several meetings over the last two months, at least, I think three meetings over the last three months. And so I've been joining the end part of that meeting and updating the committee through Councilwoman Hartman and Councilwoman Fink. So basically Wayne is still working on that kind of a feasibility, 30% design. Wayne, did you want to give any update on that?
Sure. So the feasibility is complete. And as of the results of the feasibility, we have started the 30% alignment design to submit to the state highway administration. That's the first step which gets you funding. We expect it to be finished midsummer timeframe. We'll bring it to you to review before we submit the S H A.
Great. Thank you. That's awesome. Thank you.
Just a couple other, some of mine have already been asked. Just a comment under the water reclamation treatment plant. And Josh, this is for you as well, on the grant coordination meeting coordinated by Moonshot Missions. George Hawkins, who's president of that, and I go back further than either one of us cares to remember. So if I can ever help with that, please let me know. He's a good friend of mine. He's the founder and president of that Moonshot Missions. And I think that's, that's all I have. Councilman Morse?
Are you suggesting that you're going to be moonlighting for Moonlight Missions?
Yeah, I guess so.
Good to have relationships. Yeah, it's always as usual as a healthy report here. And I do have, I'll try to be judicious with everyone's time here too. But I did want to lead in with something that Councilwoman Bodine brought up. She was not at the last council meeting. And the town of Chesapeake Beach fully supports youth sports organizations here in the North County. The primary issue was resolved and I do want to underscore it. That was resolved before that meeting. It was unfortunate the way that meeting ended. It was unnecessary in the end. You know, there was a lot of angst in the community that I think in part was well deserved here at town hall. But in the end, I believe the ball is in the Buccaneers court moving forward. We were, and again, youth sports organizations are fully supported here by this town. I think there's some things that have come to light with, you know, it's not just town residents there that we need to, you know, provide and coordinate with. But I know it's, it's, it's not just the Twin Beach community. There are folks using, that are participating in sports organizations as far south as Prince Frederick. So there's some partnering, I think, on the horizon here with the county possibly here and continuing, you know, that, trying to, you know, we want to keep sports, we want to keep the facilities here for sports organizations. The, it looked like you had the meeting with the state highway. Any discussion about truncating the median there at 260 near the octagon?
Yes, we did discuss that. And so we're working through a couple of solutions that were determined, I think coordinated with the private property owner there to see if we can restrict that left-hand turn. So we're working through that.
Strictly, you mean to ease the restriction of the left-hand turn?
Hey, do you want to cover that?
Sure.
The, this came up before Councilman Morse. So they're, they're cutting the island or cutting it back. It's off their possible solutions because the second car would do the same thing as the first one. So they're suggesting or looking at instead of turning left into the traffic there, go to the intersection and come off of E Street to the parking lot. And, and several other options they're going to consider, but scaling back the island is not one of them.
Yeah, that's disappointing to hear. We've really, the way that it's designed there and they're the ones that had their fingerprints on designing it there. You barely have enough room to get over and get out of the way of the outbound lane there.
You're correct.
And they're creating a traffic problem there.
Well, I think the solution is not to turn into there, to turn on E Street and go into the rear entrance of octagon. They're suggesting not to turn there.
Right. And how do the businesses feel about eliminating the left turn there altogether?
That's what we're going to partner with them. And we need to talk to the business before we explore any of those options.
Because I know they, I'm pretty sure that the original plan we're in past that entrance way and the owners of the business fought pretty strongly against that because they felt that that prohibited people from turning into their business leaving town. So, you know, I would say if state highway doesn't want to help, that we leave it the way that it is. I think it's making it worse for the business owners there to extend it there. And certainly would, they're a town business too, you know, and we should be partnering with them and trying to support them even before we approach state highway with that. But, you know, I, I would say an option is still to push back at state highway, just see what happened. But anyway, okay, doing the best we can there. Just a comment on the sustainability, the, the tree plan that's, that's there. I know we just, we had a, a small discussion about Kellums earlier tonight and some of the areas where some of the trees are proposed, I think we're already talking about repurposing some of those areas. So, you know, we want to be cautious about planting any trees in an area that's, you know, subject to be changed in the next, in the foreseeable future. And that includes behind that retaining wall there. I know Jay's brought that up a couple of times. Well, once we had a discussion that the retaining wall was going to need to be rebuilt at some point. And in doing that, we have the opportunity there to gain some ground there because that wall is not built on the property line. You know, you don't want to build precisely on the property line and I get that. But, you know, those things are kind of in play with the dogwood and the tree improvements there. The federal dredge, wow, that's, seems like really poor project management or someone just decided to cut funding. Somebody had to see that coming before they started the jetty work for sure. That's kind of nuts that that would happen that way. The good news is, is the dredging was completed. I mean, I can sympathize with Wayne and the town's position wanting to understand what lays ahead, what lies ahead of them as far as having to remove stuff and plan for that. Kind of keeping us in the dark there seems a little unacceptable. I don't understand unless they're trying to keep some options open there. But maybe they just ran out of money and that happens, you know. The, I was keenly interested, and then I had emailed you about it. I might have missed a response, Holly, but how, that doesn't necessarily, or does it impact local businesses there and our fishing industry there? It's just, they're not going to be doing the work on that South Jetty for the foreseeable future. That's the fact that the dredging happened, that's, that's a huge plus. But the why is that there's no serious impact on the businesses there?
And I think the concern is that if the jetty is not rehabbed, then it will just fill in much quicker. So I think that's the main concern. And so our goal is to coordinate with all of our partners and see if we can get that project to move forward, get funding for it allocated so that it can be properly completed. And that would be the impact. It's still in quicker.
Yeah. I heard you mention the state of Maryland is one of our key partners in that too. So certainly looking forward to seeing how that, that progresses there. Let me see. Last but not least, any update, any update on the Richfield Station developer and him being able to wrap things up in there? Any movement at all on that?
The developer has to comply with bond requirements and, and completing certain requirements that were not completed when he left the site. And so once he completes those, then he would be able to move forward.
And that's been, the ball, that same ball's been in that same court with him for a while now. Has it been?
That's correct.
Eight, nine months, maybe?
Probably longer.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hartman?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I just had.
You there?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Have you had any responses yet? I know it's early.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hartman. I, I did not hear you. You were in and out.
Have you?
Peggy, we're having a really hard time hearing you. You keep cutting in and out.
She sent, where she's at her wifi, a little.
May we want to put it in chat?
I can, yeah. Peggy, could you put it in chat? I think she's asking if we've had any RFP responses to the Pocket Parks, I think is what she's, yeah.
No. So we, we have a mandatory pre-bid meeting and then we have a sealed bid date. So we have not had our mandatory pre-bid meeting yet. So we'll, we'll know more once we hold that on June 21st.
Okay.
Anything else?
If you want to put it in the chat, Peggy, I can read it out loud.
Okay. Peggy, is that it?
To the RFP.
We can't hear you, Peggy.
I put.
No. Yeah. And you answered that one. She wanted to know if anyone has responded.
Have you got any response?
So we have to hold a mandatory pre-bid meeting. The proposals are not due yet. So the mandatory pre-bid meeting is June 21st. And then we will receive the sealed bids, I believe, early July. So we, we do not have anything yet. No.
Thank you.
Is it? One que, one question, one comment. One, under the safety intersection, existing intersections, Route 261 and mirrors, talk about S H A is upgrading crosswalks to continental style. And I'm sorry, I don't know what that is. What is continental style?
We're on the spot. It's, it's a different hash marking, but it does include some, I forget the time delay or different, it gives you more time in the crosswalk before traffic goes, if that makes sense. It's not just a technique. It's a, maybe Charlie, maybe you can speak to it better.
Yeah, I actually, because I was at the meeting, maybe I'll just jump in real quick. So there are two things, I think, and continental style, I think simply refers to the way the hash marks go and they're, they're vertical instead of, instead of slanted. That's continental style. And I believe what Jay was referring to, there's another term for it, which is DR, delayed something or other. And that has to do with the lights where they delay when the cars start to go and they give pedestrians a jumpstart in getting out ahead of the cars. And there is a term which I don't, I can't remember.
Lending pedestrian interval?
Yes.
Boom.
Sorry, Jay, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I thought you looked like you wanted to answer the question.
I did.
So, and just to reiterate, that meeting was in response to safety concerns with our intersections. So we coordinated that meeting with our Walkable Community Advisory Group and state highway was very receptive. They came out and we did a study in the intersections and they were receptive to the concerns with safety.
Great. And the last one I had is just, I'm imagining you've already taken care of this, but just thinking about what we just learned on 261 being closed. We've notified the firehouse, haven't we? Are they aware of it?
I will definitely reach out to them.
Please do. Thank you. Operations Manager Report, anything to add to that? Nope.
I did forget to add my thank you list for the Stars in Stripes Memorial Day Ceremony. If I could go ahead and read through.
Please.
That. I'd like to thank you, I would like to send a thanks to Dana and Jeremy Robinson for our beautiful performance. Vince Turner, our Master of Ceremonies, the Northern High School, Navy National Defense Cadet Corps, Brandon W. Temple, our guest speaker, Pastor Glenn Swanson, and Savannah Jenkins, who set up, who led our ceremony and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll ask for any questions. I'll start with Councilmember Hartman. We can hear you or type it in. Did I hear no comments?
No, I have comments.
Oh.
Um, her question is, she's curious, how many new water park employees do I get versus repeats?
We can follow up with you on that.
I was going to say, I, I wouldn't want to speak at a term. I, I have that information. I just don't have it with me at this moment, but we can follow up.
One more.
Uh, she asked if the, the shooter training or the violent critical incident training is new. This is our second year of putting this together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it? Okay. Mr. Morse?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the town for the annual Memorial Day ceremony there at the Veterans Park. I was attended this year and it was amazing ceremony. Thank you.
I agree with that. Good job. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Councilmember Fink?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bodine?
Yeah, you know, you know, I have questions regarding the water park. As I brought up at the work session, I do believe that, you know, the sooner we can get any sort of metrics or numbers, the better off we'll be so that we can see a trend when it comes to the cost. Also, I think it, I'm going to request that, that we can have a discussion about what the water park rates are and ensure that town council can have a say in setting those rates, which we currently do not have. And I do think that we can find a better balance. And I think the public would understand if we had to raise capacity from 500, for example, to 750 and lower the rates accordingly. Because I have no idea like right now if we're reaching the capacity of 500 at the park or not. And also, maybe I believe we, at one time we were, so I'd like, I'd like to request a discussion on the rates as soon as possible with the council where we actually have a say in those rates and input. a say in those rates and input. And then, do we offer, we used to offer free evenings to Chesapeake Beach residents, I think it was on Tuesdays after 4 o'clock. Do we currently do that?
No.
Could we institute that again, where we offer a free evening that is not a weekend, obviously, but to Chesapeake Beach residents? I remember a few years ago when that was implemented, it was a time of community for Chesapeake Beach residents, and they did come, not that it was close to the rest of the residents or any other parkgoers or any season ticket holders, but just that if you were a Chesapeake Beach resident, you could go for free after 4 o'clock, I think it was Tuesdays, but I could be wrong about that. The thought there is, it did provide a nice opportunity for community, for town residents and their kids, especially those that cannot afford it. And so, that's my comments on the water park. I encourage more dialogue, and the sooner that we can have that dialogue as a town council where we have a say, I think the better off we'll be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, may I follow up? Because Councilwoman Bodine raised this, I'd like to, number one, echo that we have a discussion, because I think discussions are always good. And secondly, I'd like to add one other thought to that agenda, and this is, as some of Councilwoman Bodine's ideas were, this is just total brainstorming, but I, I would like to see us consider some way to integrate local businesses into ways to see better pricing at the water park. You know, you spend a night in Chesapeake Beach in a hotel, seems to me you're a resident for a day. You have a meal at BIA or Traders, seems to me you should maybe get a better rate when you attend the park. I have no idea what the logistics are there, Carl, I'm not trying to make life difficult, but I feel like that's a real opportunity to capitalize on some of the challenges of the water park and benefit local businesses, and I'd like to see that be part of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Public Works Administrator's Report, we've read Jay's report, and Jay, anything to add before I go around for questions?
I would like to add a request, I guess. Under ballfields, we installed some failed LEDs. I lost my contacts on my phone a year ago, so I need Steve Jones with the Bucks, who's always helped me, reach out to me, and we'll.
I have his contact.
Okay, and we'll go out in the field, he's always been helpful to do that, and make sure the scoreboard's up to par.
Thank you. I'll start around for questions. Councilmember Boudin?
Yeah, I have a question, it relates back, it's sort of like on the water park, it's a combination with the town administrator's report regarding the above-the-pull structure improvements for 2023. Do we have a cost for that?
As far as I know, at this point, we really don't even have the plan, the ultimate plan. I think we're working with the 3D model to look at different options of a plan.
Okay, and one of my concerns, or one of my issues that I think you might have been here for, is that it mentions to include the slide towers. And I remember when the slide towers, might have been 10, 15 years ago, where they were enclosed, then they were not enclosed, and the steel structure was, it made it look like an erector set. And I was under the impression, that that structure, or the slide tower, was going to be, I'm kind of shocked that it's having a problem so soon, because I would think something that had been affected by saltwater and therefore was opened up like it is, looks like an erector set, would have a longer life than it currently does. I'm not sure how long ago that was, maybe 10 years ago, 15, I don't remember, but can you address that?
Sure, just for clarification, that is not part of the, of the study of the, it's below that actual, I call it like an oil rig erector sets. It's, that's okay, it's part of that and below it.
Yeah, just, we might want to consider how we word that, then, because it says slide tower, slide towers, and so you know what I'm referencing, and that's why I'm sitting there going, say what? Because we just, I mean, I know it's been years, but still, not that many years. And so, if this is a massive improvement, just know that I support the water park, I support having the water park in town. And so, we need, I look forward to these discussions as to what this means by above the waterline features, okay? And thanks. Other than that, I had no questions. Oh, how's the saddles going, everything cool?
It is, we've actually, I'll have some numbers next council meeting, reactive versus proactive, how much money the town saved. We've done a lot, we're actually going to pull out of Richfield Station, and there's a part of Bayview Hills that was built same time, same saddle, same conditions, we might go in there and do some exploring, still under the original funded budget, but I couldn't be more pleased with the progress that this contractor and the town has made. It's really not just a cost savings to the town, but it's a liability, you know, everyone at Public Works is happy to see, everyone we fix, we know it's not that 2:00 AM call, so it's been a morale boost for Public Works, really.
And I misled, I have one more. Sorry, I apologize. I had it written on my paper, and I forgot to look. It's regarding the MXUs, it says, more meters are scheduled to arrive from a year-old back order. So, I guess my question is, we also have been, I forgot what our status was on MXUs and using ARPA funds, and also, will these MXUs, will those be, will they be part of the current 2023 budget or the 2024 budget, or where, since you just got them in, well that, how is that going to work, both from a financial perspective, from your working perspective? And now, do you have enough MXUs to do what you need to do to make that whole, like, utility billing process more efficient?
I think I understand the question. So, these are in the current budget, we did not receive them last budget, and we're not going to receive what we were budgeted for, there's only going to be a few amount. Moving forward, the ARPA funding is budgeted to complete that entire changeout, if you will, to be 100% on the tower reed system. Does that answer the question?
Yes, and so, I guess the, I'll say, part B, is, do we have enough MXUs ordered and in place in order to fulfill all MXDs in Chesapeake Beach? Or do we need to order them now, because it takes so bloody long to get them?
So, they've, our provider has been in the loop on our whole design process since day one of installing this tower, of course, that was pre-COVID, pre-production, assembly, everything. So, we're earmarked for it, they are saying that they are going to get through this within a calendar year from now, so hopefully by next June, they'll be back on par, back to normal, if you order 1,000 meters, you get 1,000 meters. But I'll be honest, not just those, other providers of infrastructure have had the same kind of, we're going to get through this, and it, so I can't promise you anything, but they are giving us the word that within a calendar year, they will be back to normal, whatever we need to order, we'll order it. So, as of now, what we are getting in, in limited quantities, we're changing out failed meters that have maybe been failed for a quarter or more.
Thank you very much. Great job, you guys do wonderful work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fink?
Yeah, I should have no additional question, Councilwoman Bodine covered a couple of mine, so I have no additional questions, but just to throw out one more compliment, I know last time, last meeting, I mentioned a couple of missing rails, and you had also mentioned you were proactively weeding. I was out there yesterday, I noticed new shiny rails up already, so, well done. You know, I know, I know you comment often, it's a lot to maintain, it's such an asset to the town, and it's nice to see that work, nice to see that work done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Couple more.
Yeah, thanks. Put my EDC hat on here occasionally, still, Larry. The Richfield Station Water Tower branding of the town logo, what's the status on that?
So, I've reached out to two different providers that could do it. One of them was actually supposed to come on site last week, and they didn't, and they have not rescheduled. One is to do to come on site next week, to get us some, you know, we have the template, we have the design, it's just to get us some pricing.
Sure. Okay, thanks, glad to see this progressing there a little bit. I know we've mentioned a couple times the 3D model of the water park, is that available for council? Seems like a fun thing to look at.
Yes.
Yeah, that's kind of cool. I wanted to thank you for your continued work, the ballfield, you know, it underscores the town's continued support for youth sports organizations in Northern Calver. Keep up the good, good work, Larry, thank you. Larry and Jay. Thanks.
Is it?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Hartman?
Shall I go ahead and, you want me to read, she put it in the chat, would you like for me to read it? Okay, she said, under emergency calls, it mentioned that there was a response to three out of eight calls. What were the other five?
I'll be honest, I don't know exactly what they were, but typically, I'll tell you what they are. Someone calls that lives in Chesapeake Beach proper, but not Chesapeake Beach municipal. Some people call for their water that live in Chesapeake Beach, particularly the Highlands, but it's county water. And normally, normally, someone will call the emergency line at 2:00 in the morning and ask a question about Chesapeake Beach that they feel is relevant at the time.
Moving on, Water Reclamation Treatment Plan Report, we've read Josh's report. Josh, anything to add before we go for questions?
Not right off the top of my head.
Okay, I'll start with Councilmember Hartman.
Can I hear you?
No questions, okay. Councilmember Morris?
Yeah, Josh, as usual, your report reads as a checklist for responsible management, so thank you for that. Just, I had a curiosity, got several different paragraphs here, various monthly inspections, routine monthly inspections, there's a predictive maintenance, one says staff perform predictive maintenance. Is that routine monthly maintenance as well? Type of deal?
It's not routine monthly maintenance, it's usually going to be based off of either a pressure gauge, an hour reading, just general readings that would come up over a period of time.
I think another term for that would be preventative maintenance.
Preventative, okay. Well, my question was about, there was a word here, predictive maintenance, you know, how that was differentiated from the other lots.
That, that's because it's based off of an hour meter reading, or the, a pressure gauge reading, or something along that line, as opposed to just every month, every two minutes.
Got it, okay, very good, thank you.
No problem.
That's just a couple things, one, as I mentioned about moonshot missions going forward, if there's anything I can do to help with that, let me know.
Will do.
George Hawkins, I see you've submitted reaplication on the MPDS permit, any issues that you identified in putting the information together?
Not really, just going back through all the, finding all the data and getting it compiled in to what they needed, and then making sure they had as much data as I could possibly get to them.
Very good. And then I had a question, but it got answered when I read the town engineer's report, the headworks project is starting July 1st. I see that in your report, so, great, good luck with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris, Fink, what's your name?
No, no further questions, thank you.
Boudin?
Oh, yeah, I think Holly's trying to catch up to you in the length of reports, this is always wonderful. I just want to point out, it's nice to see the collaboration. There's a little sentence or two in here about helping out North Beach, because they had questions with their Sunrise Garden, and it's nice to see that collaboration, trying to figure out if it was water-related. And so, can you speak a little bit on that, and thank you for helping North Beach out?
They basically had, this is the second time we've assisted them with that over the past couple of years. We tested for what parameters we were able to test for, but I don't know what it actually, if they ever actually determined what the cause was. They were thinking it could have been due to some landscaper work that had been done recently, or it could have been just something that got dropped into the pond, unknown, that was toxic to the fish.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Code Enforcement Report, any, Holly, anything to add before we go around?
Yes, I would like to add, congratulations to Dennis, we did have a case this week that's been longstanding, that we were able to successfully get to a nice resolution due to his efforts and hard work, so, thank you.
Are there questions, Councilmember Boudin?
Can you say which case that was, or what the nature of the case was? Because we've had, I was, I actually had like a few that are long.
I think it was 3325 East Chesapeake Beach Road, had an issue with private septic backing up into the home, it was a non-licensed rental property, so a lot of work went into making sure that it was remedied, and so, I just wanted to point out Dennis and Jay, actually, in that.
That's excellent, actually, you brought up the one question I had, in going through the code enforcement report, there seems to be an unusual number of rental license problems. Have you seen an increase, or is this expected? Is Dennis just looking at them more closely, or what's the story behind the increase in rental license problems?
If we become aware that there's an issue, and so, I think these have particularly come to our awareness, and yes, I would say that Dennis is, has been much more alert and proactive in identifying issues.
Are we having problems resolving those issues when it comes to rental licenses?
Occasionally.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
I have nothing further, I was curious about the rent, I've had the same question, basically, and that's, that's interesting, and I think it's good, whatever that's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions, Councilmember Morris?
Yes, Dennis isn't here tonight, right? Yeah, I had a question, I brought up, maybe last council meeting or so, but heading into town from the south, and it was pointed out to me, I guess, the last time I brought this up, it was outside of town limits, on the right-hand side, there's a property there that's, huge concrete slab there that's overgrown, and there, it seems to me that the number of vehicles that are being stored there, and there's, I'm a little concerned with it turning into a junkyard. And I didn't know, it's outside the municipal boundary, but I didn't know if there was any option there to reach out to the county to take a look at that.
You want to send me the address, I can take a look at it.
I probably, I don't know what the address would be, if I have a lot number, I can, I could probably get you up, circle it on a map and send it to you. Yes, okay, yeah, you bet. And we all noticed the improvements at the Octagon recently, those were all owner-initiated, initiated, I believe, right? Quite a facelift there. I would certainly urge outreach to them as far as what our next step would be with State Highway. Clock still there? Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Hartman? Thank you. Next item, Town Treasurers Report. Do we want to take questions, or should we send them to you?
I can take questions.
Okay, we'll go around, take questions, I'll start with Councilmember Hartman.
Can you hear me?
We can't.
Keep cutting in and out.
It just cuts out.
Cut it out, okay, let me try.
Ready any question?
Yes.
Okay.
Her comment is, I really love the new format showing of blocks of ARPA money. Is that all, Peggy? No questions, only a comment.
Peggy, just going forward, we're not going to start with you, and the next one's give you a chance to type your questions in, so we can get to them quickly, so just stand by. Councilmember Morris?
Yeah, some of the curiosity, not that we're trying to check anything, and I'm certainly in support of our local gaming and our future sports betting here in town, but I've often been curious about the reporting of those proceeds, and how does the town, does the town have access to state records on, you know, the funds that come through the town, you know, that we, that our half percent is based on? Just curious.
So, the town receives a quarterly statement from the state, it's a lump sum amount by entity, and that's all the information we're provided?
I remember asking a question of a previous treasurer a few years back, and I think her comment was, we basically get a check stub from?
There is a report, and it's totals by entity.
Is that something that you could share with council? Just out of curiosity, that's all, thank you.
No questions? Fink?
No questions, but I do, this is, we've kind of gone back and forth on the ARPA laying out the, whatever kind of, kind of balance of the ARPA funds, and this is, in my head, exactly what I, what I wanted. And so, thank you for that, and just requesting that as we go, we keep this up to date. Thanks.
I, I concur totally with what Charlie said. This is exactly what is helpful, to see the ongoing balances perfectly done, and exactly what I had hoped for also. And I also encourage that it be done consistently every report, and I like the list of upcoming issues or items that will be discussed, the five, six bullet points that are in the report. And so, I look forward to those discussions. I think they're going to be extremely important to our planning going forward. And that's all the comments that I have on that.
Great, thank you. Moving on, Town Engineers Report. I'll start with Councilmember Boudin.
No, actually, I think between the Town Administration Report, I, I think I have all my questions answered, but thank you. As you talked about dredging, so I think we're good.
I'm sorry, I should have offered opportunity. Did you have anything to add before we start questions?
No, we're fine, Larry, thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Think?
I'm not going to ask my normal questions, because we've had several conversations over the last month, but I will throw in one question about the heritage. So, you've got, you've got that down to a final punch list, and, you know, how do you, how do you and Jay feel about that? Because I feel like that's going to be imminent now, and we've heard a lot of history about Richfield Station or the project. So, you know, if you were going to give them a grade, what would you give them? If you prefer not to be put on the spot like that, would that conversation be taken offline?
It's good offline.
Anything else? I have no questions, Councilmember Morris?
Yeah, I'm, as usual, I'm impressed with Wayne's efforts, and, you know, you're certainly dependent on your firm's professional experience, and continue to advance many of these very important issues for us, so, you know, good luck in the next upcoming month.
And Councilmember Hartman?
Two questions, under 261 sideblocks, was it, or what is MBE goal? And under heritage, were Calvert County issues very different from ours, or do, oh, were, sorry, were Calvert County issues very different from ours, or do they just cover different areas?
So, to answer the first question, MBE stands for Minority Business Enterprise. And any state funding requires a percentage of that, and the state sets that. The second question, we met with Calvert County, and their issues are the same as ours, although they have a separate checklist from ours, they have a separate sign-off. So, we look at town infrastructure items, they look at county infrastructure items, they're the same project, different items.
Thank you.
Edit?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, Deputies Report.
Um, if I could start out, I know the fireworks were mentioned, I just wanted to let you all know we're finalizing our operations plan for that. It'd be pretty much the same plan as last year, because I, I think it went pretty well. There'll be at least 35 deputies spread out over both towns. They'll be on bicycles, motorcycles, we'll have drones up, so I feel like we're ready. It'll be a, hopefully, a very secure and safe event, so. May seemed pretty quiet, I think you all have the report, if you have any questions about that. June, it's not starting out, it's quiet, so.
Want to offer any comments on that before we start?
Sure. So, Tuesday morning, we started receiving phone calls about spray painting in Chesapeake Village. At least three residents had their cars spray painted. Somebody's driveway was spray painted. Jake, Jake can tell you probably better than I could, I think there were sidewalks spray painted, street, street signs, utility box. So, it was a lot of racial, you know, racial stuff, swastikas, that type of thing. So, we're still working on it. We have, over the last few days, come up with some doorbell camera footage, so we may have footage of suspects, we're working on it. This case is assigned to Deputy Goff, he's out there working on it right now, actually. So, it's our highest priority. I do feel it's young people in town, but it's too early to say for sure, but it is our highest priority, and I don't know, I feel very confident that we're going to close it, it's just a matter of when.
And I was going to say, as a reminder, the town is offering a reward for information that would lead to an arrest and conviction.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll start with questions now. First, we'll start with you. Peggy, we'll get back to you last.
The, how have the patrols been on Fishing Creek? We, we had a discussion earlier this evening about some possible security patrols, you know, and how that might dovetail with some possible changes that we have under consideration at Kellum's Field, and the Kellum's Complex for that matter. You know, and in particular, trying to consider the security and the access for the beach patrols, in particular, the vehicle that you use to patrol Fishing Creek Bridge. Can you explain maybe a typical patrol of the bridge and the frequency, and no, anything of note that you've encountered over the last year?
Of the bridge, you mean underneath the bridge, or you mean the railway trail?
Yeah, the Fishing Creek, yeah, I'm sorry, the Fishing Creek, the trail.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Um, I mean, we do foot patrols, I personally do them every week. The golf cart is, it's occupied a lot, so I usually do them on foot more than anything, but we are out there. So, I personally am out there two or three times a week. Everyone in the beach patrol is required, where they're permitting, to do at least one foot patrol per shift, so they should be out there, you know, either on the railway trail, or on the Chesapeake Beach boardwalk, out on that boardwalk. So, we're out there walking quite a bit, so, but, you know, we can always improve and be out there more.
But access to the cart, I suppose, would improve?
It would, I mean, I mean, honestly, I guess if we had, had one just designated to us, that would definitely improve it, definitely, so.
Thank you.
But it's, it's occupied quite a bit, so we, you know, but we're, we still get out there, just be on foot.
Great, thanks.
You might be leading up to this later, but I just, on behalf of the town, wanted to extend welcome to Sergeant Steven Moran.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, who look forward.
Yeah, anyone who hasn't met Steve yet, he's my number one choice to replace Gary Schroder up here. He's K-9 certified, he's on our special operations team, our SWAT team, so he really brings a lot, a lot of talent and skill and training to him.
Welcome, and stay safe.
Sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. I think I saw you on the North Beach boardwalk, walking either today or yesterday, I can't, I can't remember. I'd want to follow up on a couple of things. First of all, not that I have any, any business telling anyone their business, but social media is, you know, if you're thinking that these are kids, kids being, you know, teenagers, they, I, I just remember, we had a fire in Seagate a number of years ago, and I actually was working with the Calvert County Fire Superintendent, what, or Fire Investigator? Anyway, she, they, they caught the, the, the folks that did it, the guy that did it, and part of their mission, part of their success was tracking bragging on social media. Again, you, I, I'm sure you guys are all over that, but people who are, who are also listening in, who might have friends, they, they, they're looking on social media, and they're, they might, they might spot something. Shockingly stupid, but nonetheless, but could be a thing. So, I'll move on from that. I really appreciate that you, you know, proactively addressing that, obviously, that's, that's sort of the, the big topic. I want to go back just for a minute to the questions Councilman Morris was asking. Regardless of patrols, I also would throw out bikes would be another great way to patrol Fishing Creek Trail and Boardwalk. So, you know, if you don't have access to the golf cart, but you guys are out walking quite a bit, if they have a bike, that, that could be helpful as well.
Yes, sir.
My question is, my, my question, a comment is, how often, I, I don't see it in your reports, how often does someone report an incident on the Fishing Creek Trail or the boardwalk?
I cannot think of one in recent memory, any, any incident that we've had out on the Fishing Creek Trail.
I don't, I don't remember appearing here for quite some time, so these are trails that are open, I mean, I think officially, they're, 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 you know, written, it's closed at dusk, whatever, but people may or may not be out, there's no gate, people may or be out there walking, and we see very, knock on wood, right now, we see very little reporting of incidents there. Okay, that, that's good to know, it's informative for us, and, and informs our conversations about other, other town resources.
Yes, sir.
The last thing that I want to ask is, in a conversation we were having earlier, I thought I might have heard some issues on Kellum's Field about kids being harassed, or even town staff being harassed, and I'm wondering if that's reached the level of the sheriffs, or if that's anecdotal at this point? I don't want to step over whatever's appropriate, but.
He's aware, and we've had conversations, we've been coordinating on that.
Yeah, so obviously not report-worthy yet, which is good news, but I'm glad to hear that, that we're all working together on that.
Yeah, I'm aware, and we are coming up with a game plan on that incident, so.
Uh, thank you very much, stay safe.
Thank you, Councilman.
Member Boudin?
Hi. I, I, I spoke with you earlier, that we do not have a history of incidents like this in Chesapeake Beach, but I want to be really clear. This sort of activity is unacceptable on any level. And the $5,000 reward is a good start, and I personally look forward to the day when you guys capture the individuals that did this, and that we hold them fully accountable, no slap on the wrist. I don't care if they're kids, or if they're adults. This activity is unacceptable, and the fact that we haven't had a history of these sorts of incidents is a good thing, and let's stop it now. And so, I look forward to any and all your efforts going towards solving this. And thank you for your efforts, and thank you for speaking with me earlier, I really do appreciate it, and welcome aboard, it's wonderful to have you, although you still scare me with all that stuff on you. I told him I was totally intimidated, I'm four for 11, I mean, if you look at him, he looks like he's SWAT, which he is, but thank you, but this is a serious incident, and we do not need, you know, we need to attend to it.
You got it.
Strongly.
It's our highest priority case, and my confidence on solving it is high.
It should be your highest, and I'm glad to hear that you're treating it as such, and that's wonderful to hear.
Yes.
Unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hartman? Anything?
No questions.
Thank you.
Stay safe out there.
Moving on, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, we've got the report. If you got any questions or comments, give them to me. I would just like to give a quick update for everyone. At the department, we had a celebration of life for our late president, Mad Dog Weber. I keep smiling, because his first name's Matt, but no one ever calls him Matt, everyone calls him Mad Dog. On Saturday, we had a nice turnout, we had over 700 people there. The towns of Chesapeake Beach and North Beach issued separate proclamations. However, we coordinated together, and they're worded the same, so I will read you the proclamation that was issued by the town of Chesapeake Beach. Proclamation, Town of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, Mayor and Town Council in memory of Matthew Lee Weber. Whereas Matthew Lee, Matt Weber, was born January 19, 1957, grew up in Greenbelt, Maryland; whereas Matt Weber joined the Greenbelt, Maryland Volunteer Fire Department on May 1, 1973, at the age of 16, and served until 1993 in various positions, including Sergeant, Lieutenant, Captain, Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief, and achieved life membership. And whereas it was during his service with the Greenbelt Volunteer Fire Department that he acquired the nickname Mad Dog that stayed with him the rest of his life. Whereas Mad Dog Weber joined the District Columbia Fire and EMS Department on February 13, 1989, and served as driver on Truck 16 in the Garfield Heights neighborhood until his retirement on June 14, 2014. Whereas he moved to Chesapeake Beach and joined the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department on September 1, 1993, proceeding through the ranks as Fire Sergeant, Fire Captain, elected to the Board of Directors in 2017, and elected President of the Department in 2018, serving in this position until his death on April 30, 2023. And now, therefore, in honor and appreciation of Matt Mad Dog Weber's decades of service to his community, on the sixth day of June 2023, the Chesapeake Beach Mayor and Town Council express our sincere appreciation for his dedicated service to protecting our town, and further, we express our deep condolences to his family on his passing. As is shared in the Fire and EMS family, rest easy, Mad Dog, we've got this. And as I said, the same proclamation was issued by the town of North Beach, so thank you all. Moving on, Mayor's Report. We have no report from the mayor. Going on into Resolutions and Ordinances. We have five of them, that I'm going to introduce separately. What we're going to do tonight is just set the date and time for public hearings on each one of these ordinances, so we're not going to be discussing them tonight, we'll set the date and time for it. And I just wanted to give you a heads up, when I share the times with you, you may think, wow, those are awfully close together. If any discussion on a particular ordinance starts to drag out, we let the discussion go on, we will just postpone the following ordinances, so don't think we're going to cut off the discussion. So, beginning, Ordinance O-23-16, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, to amend the language of the Chesapeake Beach zoning code regarding design standards for town houses. The public hearing will be set for July 20 at 6:50 PM. Next item, Ordinance O-23-17, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, to amend the language of the Chesapeake Beach zoning code to add a new section to 90-23 Standards of Compatibility, setting the public hearing at same date, July 20 at 6:52 PM. Ordinance O-23-18, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, to amend the language of the Town Code of Chesapeake Beach regarding urban forest, public hearing set for July 20 at 6:54 PM. Ordinance O-23-19, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, to amend the language of the Town Code of Chesapeake Beach regarding Chapter 22 Elections, public hearing set for July 20 at 6:56 PM. And finally, Ordinance O-23-20, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, to amend the code of Chesapeake Beach by repealing and reenacting with amendments Sections 25.1, 25-3B, 25-5, 25-12, 25-16A, 25-21B, 25-23B, 25-27B, 25-30, 25-31, 25-32, 25-33, 25-34, 25-36, excuse me, 36, 25-37, and 25-38, and repealing Sections 25-35, 25-39, and 25-40, and adding new sections, 25-20F, and 25-38, public hearing set for July 20 at 6:58 PM. Moving on, Reports of Officers, Boards, and Committees, Planning and Zoning. We have the report from Chair Cindy Greenwald. If you have any questions, I'm sure we will get them to her. Let me get through my reports here. Board of Appeals, no hearing was held. Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society, we have a report from Chair Sue Alexander. If you have any questions or comments, please share them with us, and we'll get them to her. Climate Change Advisory Group. A report here Coastal Resiliency Task Force, uh, as, as noted in the Town Administrator's report, the Coastal Resiliency Task Force met on June 7th and again earlier today to discuss the status of the town's coastal resiliency plan. This plan addresses issues associated with climate change and sea level rise. The plan sets out steps our town must take to mitigate the impact of these issues. Task Force is on track to complete the first draft of this plan in the near future. Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee is scheduled to hold its next meeting on Thursday, June 22nd at 6:00 PM. That will be a virtual meeting, so everyone can join. Steering Committee will discuss the draft coastal resiliency plan prepared by the task force. Our town continues to participate in US EPA-sponsored climate resilience and evaluation and awareness tool, CREATE. Most recent meeting in this group was held on May 31st. I would normally invite Co-Chair Keith to share any comments, but not with us tonight. Economic Development Committee. Calvert County Economic Development Authority met on June 19th. The agenda included discussion of the Business Appreciation Week activities during the week of May 9th, the draft zoning ordinance being prepared by county planning and zoning, an update on the redevelopment of the former Armory property in Prince Frederick, and a brief discussion of the ongoing study of feasibility of a Bay passenger ferry. Next meeting for that group is scheduled for July 10th. Next meeting of the County Economic Development Advisory Commission is scheduled for July 12th. And our Economic Development Committee is excited about the progress on Phase 3 of the Rodden Real Resort and looks forward to seeing the finished development, although we will miss the old Rodden Real Restaurant, which served our town since 1946. Looking forward to the new Rodden Real Restaurant. Co-Chair Mr. Morris, anything to share?
Oh, yeah, I'll just follow along behind you, Larry. The um, the CBQ is open over there and it's a fantastic environment over there and the food is amazing. So I encourage everybody to get out there and experience that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Green Team. Councilmember Bodine.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, just a few things. Um, first of all, um, I'd like to thank the Green Team's effort in getting the urban forest ordinance up to this point. Also, it's been a wonderful collaboration with the town administration, um, and the landscaper as we are provided now an opportunity, a real collaborative opportunity to provide input into the various projects around town. It's a wonderful thing and a good example of this is the 17th Street Garden. Um, it was planted on June 9th by the landscaper with four different varieties of plants. And uh, it's, it, these are wonderful projects that really enhance the quality of life within our town. Um, I encourage the Town Council or anyone in the public, if they have comments or questions regarding the urban, urban forest ordinance, to contact me or contact one of the Green Team members and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Um, and we encourage you to provide public comment when the time comes, uh, during that public comment phase, um, next month also. Um, our next meeting is June 28th. Uh, that's a Wednesday at 6:30. It'll be on, at the pavilions, uh, next to the water park. So unless anyone have, has any questions, um, that's our report for this month. Thank you.
Callum's Revitalization Committee, Mr. Morris.
Yeah, I just thought, like to lead in with, we had a um, a consult meeting with the Town Administrator before this meeting, uh, just to get an update on where we were with things. Um, and uh, it was a productive meeting, I felt. Uh, we re- emphasized and re-sorted some goals. I think we've got some preliminary work that we have to do with some storm drain issues and things like that. Uh, but we're certainly excited, uh, moving forward. I'm very excited to, uh, and I think a lot of the uh, changes that we're considering there, they're very superficial. I don't think there's a lot of, a lot of cost in there, um, to get, um, you know, a lot of impact, uh, for not just residents but visitors to the town. Charlie?
Yeah, just to echo that a little bit, uh, we are, we, we have a lot of neat things, like some other walkability projects. You hear us say this, we are awaiting some projects, like getting the draining done, drainage done. And uh, if, if people question some of the, not question some of those things, but sort of wonder why we're so focused on these things, have a look at the uh, have a look at the climate, potential climate impact on spaces like Callum's Field. It's pretty remarkable and it's, it's essential as we, as we design that space and as we spend um money and resources that we're doing it in a way that, that we're going to get the most enjoyment out of it over time. It's, it's really remarkable. Um, having said that, Callum's Field is open for business. We're more accurately open for play. So as a reminder to folks, um, it's, it's there. Let's get out and use it.
Thank you. Twin Beach's opioid abuse awareness coalition, Chair Mr. Pardeck is not here tonight. If there are any questions or comments, please send them directly to him. Walkable Community Advisory Group, Mr. Fink.
Technically, um, Councilwoman Hartman is, is the chair and I'm wondering if she's in a position to offer comments. I'll yield to her.
Yes, she has provided comment. Uh, pretty much covered in Holly's report. We met on June 5th, reviewed state highway actions, happy for progress, looking forward to uh seeing the new crosswalks, working to complete our mission. We've had a draft won for a while. Our next meeting will be July 31st at 6:30. Co-Chair Fink, any further comments?
Thank you, Councilwoman Hartman.
Thank you.
Just, uh, no, yeah, I'm just going to add one thing to that. You know, it was very interesting, very educational in, in the meeting with State Highway to kind of understand their perspective on things. And while it can be frustrating, um, they're not arbitrary. You know, they have reasons. You know, we say we want to crosswalk here. Um, and they have data to understand why, if you're coming over the crest of a hill, a crosswalk creates a huge risk to, not just to the driver, but to the pedestrian who makes an assumption about what, what that crosswalk entitles them to do. And so you learn a little bit that there are multiple sides to these things. And I know people are frustrated, um, talked about maybe we, we take ownership of 261 parallel to what North Beach did. Um, I'm not suggesting in any way that that's a good or bad idea, but it is apples to oranges to compare the three and a half mile stretch of 261 in Chesapeake Beach to the four block stretch or five block stretch in North Beach. Um, so there's a lot to consider there, but recognize that, um, State Highway has their reasons and a lot of data to back them up and we continue to work with them as, as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have no unfinished business. Moving on, new business. Town Council to consider awarding a contract to Pleasance Construction, Inc. in the amount of $92,186.07 from the FY23 General Fund Budget ARPA allocation is designated by Town Council as a priority number one project. This was discussed at the work session. So I'll ask if there's a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
True.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public comment? Anyone? Public comment? Lanham?
Hello. Just have a quick question.
Could you state your name for the record?
Sure. Mary Lanham with the Rodden Real Resort. Had a question. Um, tonight you mentioned about Route 261 being closed down for a few weeks, in a few weeks? Is that correct?
Yes.
After July 4th, yes. We don't have the date yet. So that's in the next three weeks? Yes. Right? Um, so that's the first that we're hearing of that. As a business owner in town, that's very concerning that we haven't been made aware of that. So just wondering how, who would notify us of that and how would we have been notified? Um, especially during peak season for us. Um, that's, it could really, I mean, it's really going to affect our business. And for us to get ahead of that, we would have liked to have known or been notified ahead of time. So we could have notified our guests and have gotten, I mean, you're, you're talking in the next three and a half weeks.
I learned today, so I wanted to make sure I, I spoke about it this evening, but we will definitely get it out on eBlast and spread it as wide as possible, fire departments, school, businesses.
Part of that is, S H A has just informed us today.
That, that's unreal. I mean, it's unacceptable. I mean, with the investment that we've made in the property and we're expect, I mean, it's our peak season. Is it during the week only or is it also on weekends?
I, I have not received the full schedule yet, but I will, I will definitely get it out as soon as I.
I mean, if you guys have any um influence on that at all, it would be great to have scheduled this during off, you know, at September, October, sometime like that would have been much better than July. So.
Understood.
That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am. Come on, Ford.
A short one. Um, Cheryl Emery. Um, I live off of, I live on Mary Ann Drive in Owings, uh, two miles away. Um, I just had a couple of things. Um, I'm still concerned in regards to the interaction with the Buccaneers. I know everybody here keeps on saying everything is all ironed out, but then I talk to the other side and it's not all ironed out. Um, I might suggest that you have some kind of impartial, impartial mediator to make sure that everybody's on the same page because take my, take my word for it, it's not. But I think they need, like I said, an impartial, impartial mediator so that everybody can agree or disagree or whatever. But right now, in my mind, talking to the Buccaneer um board members and parents, it's, it's, it's still up in the air, guys. The other thing I wanted to mention, there's animosity on both sides, okay? The other thing I wanted to mention was, um, the water park rates. I don't know if you guys are going out on social media or even just talking to somebody standing in line at Roland's. People are extremely upset, extremely upset. I don't know what y'all's bottom line is money-wise, but even by increasing the prices and lowering the capacity, you're not going to make, you, you're not even going to break even. So if the intent is to close that water park, then keep doing what you're doing. If you want that water park and this, my understanding is this community wants that water park. It employs a lot of these kids that are growing up. It's their first job. This is a water area. These kids need to know, know how to swim. I've been over a number of times. Biggest reason I've been over is I paid $115 for mine back in, in November. I couldn't afford $400 now. That's over 300% increase. That's, that's, that's unimaginable to me. You have a couple of kids, grandkids, $90 for me to get one of my grandkids in. I can't afford that. And people out there really are upset. I mean, I've been trying to keep in, in touch with a lot of the different people, especially Chesapeake Beach residents, to make them aware this is what's going on. People are livid. They can't, this is summer starting. They got all these kids. Where are you gonna, where are they gonna go? These families can't afford to take these kids to their own water park. I, I, I really hope that you can reevaluate these rates because otherwise it's going to be the same. There were two, two ducks swimming in the water park when I was there. You don't see any people. You see two ducks, two ducks flew in and just landed in the empty water park. And they didn't get, have to pay to get in. Anyway, um, please reevaluate some of these things because it's, it's not as if, as it appears at times. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on, Council Lightning Round. I'll start. Bodine.
Yeah, I actually have quite a few things, um, that I just want to share. Um, first is I did go to the Beach Elementary School community walk-through tonight at 4:30. It was absolutely lovely. Um, it's going to be really sorry and sad to see that building um taken down in uh August. But um, it was a lovely event. And what I want to share is this, and I'll give it to Holly and I'll have it pass along. They were giving us something. I'm not sure how else they're advertising it, but buy a piece of history, celebrate and remember the history of Beach Elementary with a brick from our beloved school. Um, reserve your brick today by scanning the QR code. And it just goes on about the ability to be able to buy a brick from Beach Elementary School if you so desired and know that any funds raised will be used to enhance our new playground with benches, tetherball, triple shootout, and so forth. So it goes to a really good, you know, very specific kind of like playground equipment. And you can see what they're raising money for through the sale of these bricks. So Charlie, if you could pass that down to Holly, the QR code is there and I'm sure they have it somewhere on the Beach Elementary School or Chesapeake, uh, Calvert County Public School System website. That's number one. Number two, um, I went to a, I, I was at the Chesapeake Carers Food Pantry on Tuesday. I volunteer every Tuesday evening there and they showed, came up with a program. So if you could share one of these with each count, uh, each person and then, um, make sure Holly gets one also. This is something I really want to talk about real quick. It's called the Affordable Connectivity Program, ACP. It is funded by the federal government to up to $30 per month off qualifying individuals' internet service costs. The state of Maryland has supplemented that with 15 more dollars, meaning that if you qualify, you could get $45 a month off of your internet service. This program is called Affordable Connectivity Program and it's, it's, it's for folks and I volunteer at the pantry. I know we have Chesapeake Beach residents that qualify for this. There's absolutely no bloody reason why they should not do this and it's painless. We had the, a cooperative signing up people for this program Tuesday night. It's, it's not difficult. Um, if you're, if you're on one of the following assistant programs, you qualify for $45 monthly internet, o- off your monthly internet bill, SNAP, Medicaid, Federal Public Housing Assistant, Veterans' Pen, Pension, or Survivors' Benefits. Listen to that. If you get a Veterans' Pension, we just talked about Memorial Day, veterans who have a pension can get $45 off a month of their internet service. Um, if you participate in free and reduced program, uh, the programs at, at school, free and reduced priced school lunches and breakfasts, you qualify for this program. If you received a federal Pell Grant during the current award year, so it hits college-age kids, um, if you received a federal Pell Grant, you qualify for this program. And it's simple as doing a Q, QBR code or calling a number, a telephone number. This is not difficult to sign up for. And so I just want to stress it and uh, there's that program. There's an opportunity to um really be helped if you find yourself in that situation. I'd like the idea that it's also for uh retired veterans. That's pretty cool. Um, next. Um, I did have an idea, um, also about um Bayfront Park, Bronies Beach. One thing that we could discuss as the Town Council, Mayor, Administration of the Town is we could hold a referendum. We've done it before when we talked about gambling. We could hold a referendum and that would be another approach to getting input on how we're dealing with Bayfront Park. Um, so I just wanted to raise that. I've already discussed, um, the water park rates, as was mentioned. I think they're really problematic. And so I look forward to any sort of discussions on that. Um, and finally, um, once again, I will offer to, and, and people took me up on it, dude. It was amazing. At the work session, I said, contact me if you want to talk about any of the issues that are currently going on in Chesapeake Beach. And people took me up on it. I could not have been more thrilled. A little bit too much coffee, maybe caffeine, but it was good. Um, I encourage anyone to reach out and contact me. I will meet with you. I will discuss my stance on any of these issues and why I voted the way I have. I am more than willing to discuss it with anyone, anytime, anywhere, unless I'm at work. Um, other than that, have a wonderful evening and I look forward to seeing you at the June 28th Green Team meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fink.
Yeah, just a couple of follow-ups from mostly what we talked about today. Um, Callum's Field, again, open now. So if, I really encourage folks to uh, to get out there and start making use of that, of the green space. We're, we're going to do some things in the near term and, and things in the long term, uh, to make it more amenable, but it is a town resource and it'd be great for people to start using it. Um, I just want to echo, um, what we've heard about concerns about the water park. And I, I'm, I want to make sure people understand that this was not capricious or arbitrary. Um, by the same token, I think there are opportunities. By the same token, I think there are opportunities here where we can try to figure out ways to maybe improve it. I'm going to go back to the notion of maybe engaging some of the local businesses. One of the biggest complaints that I hear is the out of town rates. And, and wouldn't it be great if the money that's part of the out of town rates goes to a local business and then the water park gets attendees they might not have otherwise gotten? Someone comes in the water park and then they, they go have lunch at a local business. Again, if you, if you stay in town overnight, certainly makes sense to me that you're, you're a resident at Chesapeake Beach for 24 or 48 hours. So I think there's opportunity there for, for discussion and I look forward to that. The final thing I'm going to say was, is a theme I've, I've mentioned in other lightning rounds, I'm just going to come back to it again tonight and, and use an important word, I think, which is civility. We had several folks come up and, and make public comment tonight, things that they felt strongly about, and I absolutely respect that. Those comments were made in a civil way, in a pleading way, and that's outstanding. So let's remember as we enter the summer season that we are all neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I had two things. One was just sort of echo, comes from Bodine about the Beach Elementary School ceremony today. I think it's important to remember that that first part of that building was built in 1964. So it's been a part of our community for a very long time. And then I'll just close and hope we see everyone at the fireworks on July 3rd at dusk. Thank you. Mr. Morris.
Yeah, sad day for Beach Elementary School, but also a great day for the elementary school. We're really blessed to live in a community. We're kind of looking by a state of the art library and we're going to have a state of the art elementary school. It's really amazing time. I wanted to, I wanted to comment on the Memorial Day service at the Veterans Park. Thanks to Carla again for helping to put that together. You know, maybe I shouldn't repeat this part, but there've been some social media comments criticizing the size of the town's flags lining 260 coming into town during this time of year. That's the first time I've ever seen anything like that. I mean, our patriotism is amazing in this town. The Memorial Day service that I experienced this year was not unlike the previous ones that I've experienced there. They're, they're amazing. And I think part of it is I don't have any point of military reference in my family. My father wasn't in the Navy. I wasn't in the Marines. Being in this community, there are a lot of service members in this community. And so the weight and the depth of the sacrifices that 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 date represents. I think part of it is me getting older, but it's the, the weight and the depths of the service, of the sacrifices there. And it's not just of the people that gave their all, but their families that have sacrificed so much. It's just, it seems to increase exponentially for me. You know, was it, it was a remarkable day to have the service? Was it that we had this incredible flag at the, that's at the end of 260? You could see it from a mile away, maybe. The guest speakers that we had, that we arranged. It was just very moving for me and I'm looking forward to not just limiting my emotions to that day, but carrying that respect forward. So I appreciate the service that we had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hartman.
She said she will hold her lightning round for next week or for next meeting.
Thank you. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.